Okay.
Just one second. We are now live.
Okay, we're ready to go. I'd like to call this meeting of the May 18th, the Jamestown City Council Voting Session to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Sheldon?
Here.
Councilwoman James?
She's on mute.
She's on mute. Thank you. Councilwoman Caruba?
Here.
Councilman Olson?
Here.
Councilman Nelson?
Here.
Councilwoman Eklund?
Here.
Councilwoman Graham Reinhardt?
Here.
Councilman Russell?
Here.
And Council President Dolez?
Here. It's time, I'd like to, is there a portable minutes from the April 27th, 2020 Voting Session?
So moved.
So moved by Councilwoman Eklund. No vote required for that. Do we have any messages from the mayor?
We do. Would you like me to read the mayor's messages or the correspondence that I've received first?
Yeah, you can read the correspondence. I was gonna do that under petitions and communications. That's fine.
Okay. But with correspondence then?
Yeah, go ahead. That's fine.
Okay, all right. I have a letter that stated May 11th. This came from Pete Moraglia at the JRC. And this was in support of the letter that I read at the work session. It was an oversight on my part, so I'd like to read it into the record now. Stated May 11th, 2020, to the Jamestown City Council regarding review of city codes pertaining to downtown restaurants. On behalf of the Jamestown Renaissance Corporation, JRC, I'm submitting this letter of support of the request by a group of downtown business owners for the review of city codes pertaining to the operation of restaurant and food services. The COVID-19 pandemic is having immediate and long-term impacts that will require temporary and permanent changes in laws, codes, and regulations for our city. The group of business owners is asking that codes 245-11 permit serving alcoholic beverage operation standards and 245-12 design standards be reviewed and considered for changes. The suggestions provided by the group are reasonable and provide a solid basis for consideration and review. The JRC is committed to working with the city and these businesses regarding this matter. It is of extreme importance that work on this begin immediately. Sincerely, Pete Moraglia, Executive Director, Jamestown Renaissance Corporation.
Thank you.
Okay, I also have received three emails. The first is pertaining to the energy contract resolution. This came to our office from Doug Champ, so I'll go ahead and read, read the email. City Council, this is presented to you via email as this or letter writing is now the chosen and necessary method of communication. I have suggested years ago and as recently as last year's 2020 budget presentation to review the application of using absorption chiller system for meeting the cooling needs of the municipal building. Please find an attached WWW site connection for review and understanding of absorption chillers. It is most likely this commentary comes too late for your consideration. As I have stated, this opportunity for application was introduced by me long ago. However, I have seen no such engineering evaluation on comparison of its use and associated costs. Am I missing something? In addition, most if not all of the municipal building needs to have the opportunity needs have the opportunity of being met through roof-mounted solar arrays which are becoming more efficient and less expensive, with the possibility of funding assistance for their installation. The solar capacity needs could also be supplemented by the integration of the West Side of Tracy Plaza with tracking solar collection. The fuel source is solar, not fossil fuel usage, thus meeting the NYS 2030 energy mandates. The added benefit of this application would be combining thermal storage collection, which can be used for the building's hot water energy needs. Why did the city hire a private contractor to do the energy application design study when the BPU could have done it in-house? These are all city-owned buildings being considered, and we have a city-owned utility staff with engineering talent to do it. This type of work was done when I worked there, for I helped to do it. This whole energy project has very limited innovation attached to it. It is being driven by the BPU decision to shut down the chilled water system to the municipal building. This existing chilled water system has never been regionally or nationally marketed, especially in the future where major national firms are looking for low-temperature cold storage building needs. Then next to be illuminated will be the district heating system in the municipal building. So we can send an example for all existing DH users to disconnect from our community energy system and go back to individual fossil-fuel-driven connections for which the BPU will have to bear the cost for. Yes, natural gas is very cheap now, but if this city is going to enhance its status as a New York State city, both adhering and following a responsible fossil-fuel-usage energy elimination plan, this project is presented as not doing it. It is going the other way. By the way, if you equate the possibilities of $78,000 in total annual energy savings from all aggregate building work, it calculates out to a 24-year payback on a $1,947,547 investment, which doesn't include the interest on the bonding charges. In the time of CO-V and its long-term effect on the city's financial future, should we do this project now? We may have to furlough employees, reach insolvency, but we will have energy-efficient buildings. Table this proposed resolution until further energy evaluation can be done. Consult with the BPU for a postponement of the chilled water system shutdown until next year. It is not going to explode. Much more work needs to be evaluated and done on the municipal building to justify these costs and the message it sends. By the way, what is the estimated energy savings for just the municipal building with this scope of work versus the cost of the work to be done? Respectfully submitted, Douglas V. Champ, 225 Bowen Street, Jamestown, New York 14701. And the link that he attached was to a website, www.goldman.com.au/energy/companynews. How does an absorption chiller work? The next email that I have is also from Mr. Champ. This is regarding Resolution 12, amending the CDBG funds. So I'll go ahead and read this one. The two legs of your proposed assistance program are both worthwhile. However, I am going to propose a third leg. But first, I would like to offer some suggestions and modifications to your two-pronged approach for using this assistance. One, the Small Business Recovery Grant should have a formula for returning at no interest the awarded grant. This could be done over a period of time, months/years. Why? It will help to create and perpetuate a revolving loan fund for future use. The payment plan would be threshold-based and linked to business profits associated with business sustainability. In some respects, any applicable Jamestown small business could reapply in the future for such under-stress needs. Small business is now current but closed, and those not open but in the future could participate. This program thus would become renewable if we do not spend all the funding away over a short period of time. Number two, the Rental Assistance Program. While this program is a direct subsidy to L/M renters, it also has a direct financial benefit to the landlords. This is fine in the three-month reimbursement window for arrears of the tenant's rent, but will the renter be able to continue to pay the rent? Will the landlord address any and all housing code violations found in the rental property? Either previously cited or those newly found, so quality of the rental unit will be lifted. This is an admirable program, but again, the money will be soon gone. Summary, if this is the purpose of the $704,881 to spend it all down on current CO-V financial losses and impacts, then by all means, get on with it. However, I am offering another leg to walk with, one that can provide assistance to both current L/M renters, want-to-be owners, and people in search of single home ownership. We have enough pathways already for finding and occupying rental housing. Some will say the future of Jamestown housing is only with rentals. I say, how about a pathway to homeownership? Proposed leg three, Home Ownership Assistance Program. In the time of CO-V and its economic aftermath, excuse me, the difficulty of having a reliable and financially sustainable job to come back to is going to be precarious at best. Many people will just not have the necessary down payment percentage necessary to buy a house. They will be stuck as a renter for years. Ask any realtor now what the first asked buying question is. Do you have or will you have a job that has apparent longevity and appropriate income associated with it? In the aftermath of this virus's financial chaos, having any appropriate homeownership down payment for L/M or even middle incomers will be hard to have and obtain. So I suggest you set aside $200,000 from the $704,881 to be used for a percent down payment for first-time homebuyers. These funds could be aligned and merged with other funding sources linked to any other residential homeownership assistance available. This Home Ownership Assistance Program would allocate down payment much necessary assistance for helping homeownership. The Down Payment Assistance Funds could be paid back over time, say five years, to be reestablished as a program would provide a way for first-time homebuyers to purchase their first house and have the necessary down payment. The city would see a return on this investment through homeownership, property taxes, and neighborhood renewal via residential buy-in. Foreclosed properties could be recovered as owner-occupied housing and not go rental via out-of-state or out-of-country landlords. Comments, Douglas V. Champ, citizen of Jamestown, 42 years. Okay, the last piece of correspondence that I have this evening comes through email from Tommy and Delora. Hello, I would like to share my opinion of how the grant should be spent. I like the idea of the Rental Assistance Program very much. Not only will it help people with no income pay rent, it might get landlords who want to participate to register with the city. I think the entire $700,000 should be used for this program or similar programs that help homeowners and tenants. I feel businesses have the PPP to apply for. If businesses do get some of this money, think that downtown businesses should be scrutinized very carefully before receiving money from this grant. Many of them have already received large benefits from the $10 million grant that was given out last year or the year before. I think if businesses are to be considered, they should be located outside of downtown. Thank you very much. Best to you, Tommy and Delora. That's it for correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to messages from the mayor.
Sure. I have one appointment to be read this evening to the City Council of the City of Jamestown, New York, council members. In pursuance of Section 523A of the Real Property Tax Law, I do hereby nominate Cynthia Selstrom, 8 Gordon Street, Jamestown, New York 14701, to be appointed a member of the Board of Assessment Review in and for the City of Jamestown, New York, to fill the unexpired term of Jameson Olson. The term for which said appointment is to be made will expire September 30th, 2023, dated May 18th, 2020. Edward A. Sungquist, Mayor of the City of Jamestown, New York.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and vote on the appointment tonight? So moved by Councilwoman Eklund, seconded by?
Councilwoman Caruba.
Caruba, okay. Clerk, please pull the council on the suspension of rules.
Okay, Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
And Dolez?
Hi. It's passed, so do I have a sponsor for the appointment? Motion to sponsor. Okay, second. Hi, Graham Reinhardt. Clerk, please pull the council on the appointment.
Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
Dolez?
Hi. This time, I believe there's a letter regarding proclamation on new hires and retirements.
There is, yeah. Dear council members, on May 11th, 2020, I recognized by proclamation the retirement of three City of Jamestown employees, Lieutenant John Johnston, Darlene Moose, and Timothy Covey. Attached, please find the retirement proclamations honoring and congratulating our three retiring employees. In May of 2020, we have also welcomed three new employees to the City of Jamestown, Joshua Maines, Abby Jones, and Ross DJ Olzuski. I am asking that these new hires be acknowledged and welcomed to the city at the May 18th, 2020 City Council meeting. Lastly, last month, I extended the city's state of emergency declaration as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. On May 15th, 2020, I have officially reextended the state of emergency, hopefully for the last and final time. Very truly yours, Edward A. Sungquist.
Thank you. At this point, we'll go on to the reports from our standing committees, and we'll start with our Council Finance Chair, Councilwoman Eklund. We'll read the first four.
No, hurry.
Get that backwards.
Oh, you have that back.
Councilwoman Caruba.
Three is reading one through four.
Okay.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing payment of the regular audit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
Dolez?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, or reimbursement requests for federal aid or Marchiselli aid on behalf of the City of Jamestown with the New York State Department of Transportation for a project that is eligible for funding.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
Dolez?
I have a resolution authorizing the payment of $20,000 of principal and $400 interest on various purpose bonds. This is noted to be the final payment on this bond.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
And Dolez?
Bye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the payment of $315,464 principal and $53,859.70 interest on public improvement bonds refunding of 2010A Bonds issuance of March 19th, 2019.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Do we know what those were paying?
I didn't. Say that again.
Joe, can you tell us?
Grant, you keep going to mute.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Now we can.
Okay. I was just asking what that, if we knew what that bond was for. Hang on a second.
So that's the one we talked about last week.
The finance, yes.
Yeah, the the 2010 bond was refunded. And this is, this is the first full payment on that refunding, but as far as what the original bond was for, it was pretty much entirely for DPW parks equipment and some DPW projects.
Thank you. Any other questions? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Excuse me, hi.
Thank you. Councilwoman James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
Dolez?
Hi. Well, now move on to the Chair of the Finance Committee, Councilwoman Eklund.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have written authorizing the payment of $280,000 principal and $4,650 interest on public improvement bond Series A issue of June 1, 2011.
Any questions or comments?
Joe, how about that one?
Okay, the 2011, I can, I pulled that one out here in anticipation of your question. It was for the construction, reconstruction, and improvement to city buildings, including roof reconstruction, window installation, repairs to Tracy Plaza of $1,5,250 construction, reconstruction improvements to the central garage of $1,333,000, the acquisition of fire, fire apparatus, $191,000, and the acquisition of machinery and apparatus for construction and maintenance of $1,470,000.
Perfect. Thank you. How long, how long does that bond last?
That was a total issue of $4 million. This, this bond, the final payment is in 2026.
Awesome. Thanks again, Joe.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
Dolez?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing mayor and director of Public Works to purchase slurry seal surface treatment from Suko on Lister Street, Jamestown, New York 14701 at $263.12 per ton for application, plus $17 per ton for M.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
Dolez?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution adopting the 2020 fee structure for the Parks Department mowing private and abandoned properties to be charged to the property owner on record. Again, and I'm just going to stick, this is an increase to, over, a large increase over what we had. Individuals do not pay their bill, it will be attached to their taxes at the end of the year, so this is, I encourage them to hold their property, and if not, you will receive a payment of either $45 per hour.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
Dolez?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have written authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Highmark Life Insurance Company of New York Place Premier Consulting Associates LLC, 1416 Sweet Home Road, New York 14228, for a specific excess stop-loss insurance for the period of June 1, 2020, through May 31st, 2021, at a cost of $67.07 per covered participant per month.
Okay, any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
Dolez?
Hi. That completes our resolutions from Finance. We'll move on to the Public Safety Committee and its chairman, Councilman Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution adopting an ordinance amendment in order to change the language of the city's Code of Ethics adopted October 5th, 1970.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that?
This is just kind of straightening up some language, kind of to make the charter or the code more gender-neutral.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Caruba?
Hi.
Olson?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Eklund?
Hi.
Graham Reinhardt?
Hi.
Russell?
Hi.
Dolez?
Hi. That completes our resolutions that were prefiled from our committees. At this point, are there any reports from special committees? Reports from city officers? Reports from council members on administrative boards? We'll move on. Any unfinished business? If not, we'll move on to new business. We have three resolutions under new business. All three will be read by Councilwoman Eklund.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Public Works to enter into an agreement ECS co-Southern Tier Western New York 2663 Third Avenue, Falcon River 14733, as per the investment-grade energy audit performed by ESCO dated May 7th, 2020, for a total sum of $1,947,574. I just, you open it up to anyone, I want to make a few comments about this. As we'll recall, this was, a lot of this funding for this was included in the, in the September bond that we voted on for the consult, all the stuff that we did. But there's a couple other things to note on this. The numbers I received today from Joe and Jeff in many discussions with them that over 400, just over 415,000 of this monies is grant-funded through DRI and LED lighting project. It's over a million that is going to go into the just a billion that will go into the, the heating and cooling system, leaving about 444,000 that we are, there are seven projects that are involved. The estimated savings of this recurring over these years is above $65,000 to our budget. And again, I know there's some uncertainty, as we've heard multiple times, with the cooling and heating system. And I think we definitely need to address and take care of, along with the $440,000, $15,000 grant for the lighting. As we all know, LED is proven as a cost-saving, so the way to go for energy efficiency. So the Finance Committee feels strong in recommending this forward, so I just wanted to make that known out there for anybody who had any underlying question of totals and all that. I know that it was brought to us last week, but that gives kind of an overview summary.
And I'd like to also add that the court which rents space in the building has a certain restriction on how warm that building or how warm the courtroom can be. And without the cooling, we could have problems with the court occupying that space, so they would have to close. So I think, you know, given the fact of the aging of that system, I think it's been explained that they've done as much as they can do with what they have. We have to do something else. And the cooling is going to be significant for some of the upper floors where the courtroom and the mental health offices are occupying space as well.
Any other questions?
Since Todd and Scott are on with us, could they kind of elaborate on some of the questions? Those seem like some decent questions from Mr. Champ about the energy, you know, moving forward, you know, being on fossil fuels and things like that. Obviously, you guys have done the research into it. Could you kind of elaborate on, you know, why maybe something like he was proposing wouldn't work, or, you know, I just want to make sure that, as you noted, you know, as we're moving forward, trying to get away from fossil fuels, here we are putting a, you know, $1.1 million gas burning unit in, in City Hall.
So I get, we can start with the absorption chiller. Absorption chillers are useful if you have a lot of free access waste heat. It's an older technology, not very well-used anymore. It's very expensive to install, it's a high maintenance, and what we proposed is a magnetic, that's called a Maglove chiller. It's actually the most efficient chiller on the market. It's the most efficient technology. It's basically a magnetic centrifugal compressor, oilless. The shaft actually is, levitates on the bearing on the magnetic, magnetically with just like an air gap in between it. Very quiet. It has a small footprint, much less costly to install. The mandate that he talks about for the New York State, the 2030, is about trying to make electricity by renewables that the governor signed back in January of 2019. So basically, a chiller that runs off from electricity is not really a big issue because the, the, the way forward is to make electricity off of renewables, so the chiller will not run on fossil fuels. As far as the boiler system goes, the boilers are one of the most efficient boilers. Yes, they run on fossil fuels, but the district heating runs on fossil fuel now. I mean, obviously, we all know that originally it was waste heat from the coal process for making electricity. Uh, but it's no longer runs that way. Now it runs off from a separate natural gas fired boiler and is distributed throughout the city. This is actually much more efficient than doing it that way. The boilers are more efficient and the system overall, making it local at the City Hall versus having it piped throughout the city is much less. That's much less efficient than doing it right at City Hall. Do you?
Oh, go ahead.
You actually go to bid on that for the whole thing? I mean, that's, that's the, that's the, the price we got is, is the best price out there?
So what we, so our, our company is an accredited ESCO. We're one of about 18 to 20 in, in New York State. We're also accredited nationally. What an energy services company is able to do is through the initial engineering and analysis, be, evaluate the costs versus the savings, be able to implement those costs and guarantee the savings. And so that's, that's what sets us apart from a, you know, just a, just a typical contractors. We have to guarantee those savings. And so that makes us a bit unique. We're, we're on the hook if those savings aren't met. So we, we select, you know, the best design, the most efficient design we possibly can in order to get the right project that we can live with long term. So you know, there's, there's a whole process that goes, you know, goes, goes into these, into these projects in order to make us feel comfortable that we're able to guarantee for the term. Just want, just to add to that, the, the the payback on, on the project is, it just be, you know, basic math is about 24 years. If you take out different funding sources and that, it's obviously less, but to stay with dollars and cents on the surface, that's about the life expectancy of, of most of the equipment. And so if we were to add scope, we would really be pushing the overall project's value over that, you know, over a longer period of time. So we have to evaluate that. That's part, that's part of what we presented was in our, in our report is how we can do this as a turnkey project accredited as an ESCO brought nationally by, and, and within the state of New York and guarantee those savings for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was good. I answered a lot of questions.
Yeah, I appreciate Grant's questions. Um, thank you, Grant. And but I also, Todd and Scott, thank you for being here tonight to
Of course.
Um, yeah, to fill us in. Appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, with a clerk, please pull the council.
Clerk, Councilman Sheldon.
Aye.
James.
Aye.
Karuba.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Graham Reinhardt.
Sorry, aye.
Uh, Russell.
Aye.
And Dulce.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution 11 is suspiring freeze and authorizing a filling of one full-time clerk to and the Jamestown Police Department is funded in the 2020 general fund budget and was a resignation, so just so everyone's clear.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon. James.
Aye.
Karuba.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Graham Reinhardt.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Dulce.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution 12 is amending the 2000 Action Plan to allocate community development block grant funds authorized by the Corona Aid Relief and Economic Security Act.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please.
Yeah, I just, actually, I'd like to say something. I do realize that it's probably a little late now to really restructure this, especially if it's been approved. But I, I do think that we, as moving forward this year, we should look at trying to help out some of the homeowners. You know, obviously, we targeted some of the rent payers and, you know, went after helping the businesses. But I do, you know, like the idea of trying to, you know, find some way to help some of the homeowners that have been impacted by this as well.
Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilman Sheldon.
Aye.
James.
Aye.
Karuba.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Graham Reinhardt.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Dulce.
Aye. That's it for resolutions. Is there any other new business to come before the council? I had three things I just wanted to bring up. If there's nothing else, just reminder that next week, of course, next Monday's Memorial Day, unfortunately, there will not be a parade. But we certainly want everyone to remember and honor our veterans and people who served in the military over the years. Also, our next meeting, we also are, we're off for the June 1st Monday as well, because there are five Mondays in June. So our next work session, I believe, is June 8th. At this point, I would like to plan on meeting in person. I think that, you know, three weeks from today, we should be well into the next phase or two of the opening. And, you know, this has been, although this has worked out really well, I think we should probably plan on meeting in some degree, even if we have to modify it and spread out or do what we have to do. But more to follow with that. I don't know if the mayor wants to follow up on that as well. Lastly, I just wanted to also say that we did have a meeting last week via Zoom with the downtown restaurant owners, some of them, about changing some of the codes and ordinances. And I know we're looking forward to the mayor sending plans to us about some of the issues that they talked about and trying to help them, work with them to get them back up on their feet and utilizing outside space as best we can and helping them, you know, as we, as we move forward and our reopening plan. So I don't know if the mayor wanted to comment on a couple of those items, but I did want to bring those up, so thank you. Eddie, if you want to say anything about those or?
Sure thing, President Dulce. So a couple of items. We, we will, I'm happy to look into making sure that we're able to meet in person on June 8th. I will actually run that by the regional control room to see what other municipalities across Western New York are going to be doing. Just to be, make sure that we're safe and we're doing things in line with what other areas are doing. The second item you talked about was potential changes to restaurants using outdoor space. We are meeting internally this week. I believe it's either tomorrow or when to coordinate the overall plan and have a pilot program in place for the council members to review. So we're hoping to do that as, as soon as possible, but we have an internal meeting this week to just coordinate who's doing what and setting deadlines for that plan.
Thank you. Yeah, and it was, just to note, it was a very productive meeting with the restaurant owners to listen to them and some of their concerns and some of the problems they're if they're facing and will be facing as they try to reopen under strict new regulations and requirements. So anything we can do on our end to try to help alleviate some of those problems that they will be facing to help them get back up on their feet again. So if there's nothing else to come before the council, then I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Have a good night.